Good afternoon and welcome to the special meeting of the Arts and Culture Commission. It is Monday, January 12th. May we have roll call, please?
Commissioners DeHavane, Sian.
Here.
Kivane.
Kivane.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I apologize.
Flash.
Lee.
Here.
Oshagan.
Here.
Chirikian.
Yes.
Chairperson Dever.
Here.
The agenda for the January 12th special meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside City Hall on January 8th, 2015.
Next item.
Item two, oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not on this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. The commission may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The commission may refer the matter to city staff for investigation and report.
And I don't have any cards, correct? Next item.
Item three, business agenda. At 3A, action item. One, discuss and provide direction to staff on the 2015-2017 work plan related to the Urban Art Fund.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We're here today, it's been a quick two years, but we're here today to discuss the 2015-2017 work plan. This is an initial, very high-level discussion, the first of several conversations we will have related to the work plan, and today is focused on the urban art program. So, we're going to review a couple of things, kind of to give us some framework for the discussion. One is your milestones over the last couple of years, and then the goals of the arts and cultural plan, and a quick status update of where we are with the 1315 plan, and then proposals for the 1517 work plan for your discussion. So with that, we'll start with PowerPoint. I think, it's up. It is up. So, several milestones, just to remind everybody, in December 2010, the Urban Art Program and Fund Ordinance was adopted by council, and this funds permanent and temporary artwork, programs, and city cultural facilities. On May of 2012, the commission's role was redefined by council, and we transitioned the commission from the Community Services and Parks Department to the Library Arts and Culture Department. In October of 2012, the commission had a retreat, and the outcome of that was an arts and cultural plan that was approved by council in February 2013. Then in July of 2013, the commission recommended approval of the 1315 work plan, and in September of 2013, city council approved that. At that time, we approved, or the commission approved, a total expenditure of $371,000. And by the end of June 30th, or the end of June 2015, we anticipate spending $251,000 out of the $371,000. So, as you recall, the commission did develop an arts and cultural plan, and the goals were quickly to raise visibility of the arts in Glendale, to use arts and culture to encourage community pride and neighborhood beautification, to use arts and culture to encourage visitor attraction and economic development, to grow and support Glendale's identity as an innovative and creative community, to advance the roles of arts and culture in city government, and finally, to use art as an educational tool to address social and cultural barriers. A recap of the 2013-15 work plan. We implemented the utility box mural program in three phases. One has not been implemented yet, but 26 murals were painted in the downtown area, 11 murals in Montrose, and in May of 2015, we expect to do murals in Adams Hill and in the south area of Glendale. The Performing Arts Program, another successful program, 13 free public performances at Brand Library and Art Center, as well as two other venues, and we attracted over 100 people per performance. In June, July of 2015, commission at a recent meeting approved eight additional performances to be scheduled at the Brand Library and Art Center. We also approved the professional services agreement for art in vacant storefronts. We've done two of the eight committed exhibits on Maryland Avenue, and the Art in Public Spaces, which is being managed by Joy Fuhr and Afta Productions, and that is in process as we speak. The fund also supported the Kalish sculpture, which was installed at Fire Station 21, and we expect in the next couple of months to also initiate an RFP for murals on city property. The significant art event, which was also budgeted, is being proposed for the 2015-17 work plan. So, to the nuts and bolts of this discussion, the proposed work plan. So, the first initiative that's recommended is the Cultural and Performing Arts Series. That would include micro grants up to $1,000 per event, a series of performances at a variety of venues, multiple disciplines, from comedy to storytelling to, you name it, we can think about that and kind of define that at a later date. And the proposed budget would be $25,000 per year for the two-year cycle. The second proposal is to continue the, well, not continue, but to implement another mural on city property program, so that would entail identifying city properties and in locations that will engage pedestrians, and the proposed budget for this is $45,000 in each year. The third program would be to continue the very successful Murals on Utility Boxes, also known as Beyond the Box. So this would expand the program to other Glendale neighborhoods. We would continue to partner with other community events, and the proposed budget for that is $25,000 per year. The next one is what we're calling the pop-up arts and cultural events, and that would be a continuation of the Art in Vacant Storefront program, but it would also be expanded to include experiential art. I think we found, as I said earlier, we've implemented two of the eight committed programs for the vacant storefront project, and unfortunately, we've had some difficulty finding venues for that, so at one of our prior meetings, it was recommended to expand that to pop-up experiential art, which could include a variety of disciplines. The other thing that's not necessarily a program, or is not a program, is the recommendation to do a public art master plan. We've done the cultural plan, which is a very broad-stroke effort to put some definition on the goals of the commission, but this one would actually zero in on public art and some of the goals. It would be to engage a consultant, to work with the commission, to work with city staff, and to engage in some kind of public participatory process. And that, I think, is important to not only build on the arts and cultural plan, but also to ensure the longevity of the Urban Art Fund through responsible stewardship of that fund, to identify long-term priorities, to provide long-term financial strategies, to identify related policies. In the past, we've talked about talking to the city about CIP, including art in CIP projects, city CIP projects, but I'm sure there are other policies that could be discussed, and then to identify locations. It's been kind of a piecemeal process in terms of the initiatives that we put forth. You know, step by step, we've found locations, but there should be a more strategic approach to that. The budget, as recommended, is $50,000, and that would be anticipated in the first year of the plan, and hopefully completed in the first year of the cycle, 15-16. And the next event, as I said, we're going to defer the signature art event to the 15-17 cycle. We have, the commission has approved the RFP for Glendale Arts. We still need to go before city council for their approval on a professional services agreement, but that would have to wait until this work plan was approved. And in discussion with Glendale Arts, who were the recommended body to manage this program, they are proposing an event in September of 2016 to correlate with the anniversary of the Alex Theater. And the budget for that would be $50,000 in each year. And in the proposal from Glendale Arts, they anticipate spending close to $200,000 for this process through either in-kind support or grant-funded support. And finally, the temporary public art in public spaces, that would create new venues for artwork and enhance city-owned properties, but unlike the current program that's being managed for Afta and would be very short-term projects, this proposal is saying that the temporary art would be in place for 18 to 24 months, and the proposed budget for that is $50,000 per year. And then, as in past work plan, we are recommending a discretionary fund, but in a different kind of way. The first one would be for the acquisition of permanent art on city property. A couple of opportunities have arisen over the last two years that, because we didn't have a plan in place, we couldn't take advantage of, but this would put money aside for those kind of opportunities, but that budget can't be determined until we go through a public master, a public art master plan. And then, as in the past year, discretionary fund, that would be truly a discretionary fund for things as they arise, but also based on the conversation that we had about the Performing Arts Series in particular, this fund could also go for capital outlay expenditures to enhance city-owned performance venues. And then finally, maintenance and conservation of $10,000 per year, and, sorry, the second discretionary fund would be $20,000 per year. In the PowerPoint, just for your referral as we discuss this, is a summary of everything that I just talked about. And finally, we turn this over to, oh, I should mention that right now, your report has a lower amount, but since the time that the report was written, the budgeting has been updated, and so the total Urban Art Fund at the moment is $3,166,332, and that's attributed to all the development that's going on in Glendale and the contribution of 1% to the fund in lieu of onsite art projects. What's being recommended for this 15-17 work plan is a budget of $550,000, which is amortized over 10 years, which I think was the last recommendation in the 1315 work plan. So, commission, the next steps for you are to consider a couple of things. What are your priorities based on the review of the proposals? Are there proposed programs that are not of interest to you? Are there additional programs or projects that you'd like to have included? And is the proposed funding level of $551,000 appropriate? So with that, I'll turn it over to you for discussion.
Great. Thank you very much for all of that, for working that in the background. It's appreciated. Before I open the floor to the discussion, I wanted to just talk about the kind of the approach to the conversation, just the order of it. So what I'd like to do is first kind of touch on big-picture reactions, questions, comments to the presentation, and then getting into, next after that, looking at things that might be missing from this, that we want to add for discussion purposes to the programs that weren't presented as part of this draft plan. And then from there, go into a program-by-program discussion about, well, not getting too granular about, you know, what kind of art specifically, but, you know, the bigger thematic, bigger goals, so you have enough information to know whether this is really a priority or not, and then whether the budget's appropriate for those. So, that's my, and then if, once we get through that, if we find that we've kind of blown out the budget completely, or we have way more than the staff could possibly do in the next couple of years, then we'll have to start looking at prioritizing based on the programs and by budget after that. So that's what I'm proposing to attack this. And with that, then I would like to open the floor to just big questions, responses, thoughts about what was proposed here. Commissioner DeHavane.
Two questions. Number one, I want to be clear. So, the idea is that with discretionary amounts, we are going to, city is going to buy art work for the city itself, for this building, and the next one, if I'm right, and the next one was that there would be city-owned performances or activities related to art that money would be stipended on that, correct?
Yeah. Well, the first one, the discretionary fund for acquisition of artwork, would be based on whatever the recommendations of a public art master plan would be. So, if the recommendation was to encourage public art on city-owned property, then we would utilize that fund for that particular purpose. As far as the performance spaces, that was an outcome of the discussion about the Brand Library and Art Center in particular, and the fact that the plaza was not large enough to accommodate the audiences that we attracted. So that would mean perhaps building, or not building, having a temporary stage or more seating, I mean, just as an example. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. It's a fantastic idea, just I wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Lee.
In seeing that we're not going to have any large event until 2016, I would put in, let's say, $10,000, and let's do open studio tour. And because we've been dark for two years now, you know, we haven't had any events, and that staff has a problem, if not, we can see if we can bid it out, because I recall the, our budget was only $5,000 something before for this open studio tour. So if we put in $10,000, you know, hire a committee to do something to get this done, I can see it coming up in August, September, at least we'll have something, because like I said, in, you know, we're pushing it another year that we haven't had any events.
So what I'm hearing is a proposal to add that to the conversation. Is that correct? Great. Commissioner DeHavane.
Just, I wanted some clarification on that, because if you remember, it's a program we really love, I know that, but since commission has a different direction and we do not program it ourselves, so we are kind of sponsoring and having different community organizations doing it, and from what I understand and remember, I think Glendale Arts was going to have some kind of an activity which was going to be kind of incorporating that promoting art and artists in the community, and most probably it was with their master plan for whatever they are going to do in 2016. But I hope I'm on target, but this is what I remember based on the situation.
I would like...
Ms. Cherry, clarification?
No, I just, I would like to add that when we did open studio tour, the last time we utilized brand galleries, and brand galleries is pretty much booked through this year. The other option that we discussed was Central Library, but because we're starting the renovation in June, Central Library won't be available either. FYI.
Commissioner Chirikian.
The way I would like to discuss this matter, which I really appreciate how you approach it, first of all, I would like to see the master plan. We have a vision, let's have some ideas and put priorities. And as I see on page 10, which is the goals, very interestingly, they are kind of categorized, and I would like to emphasize on each one of them. That will give us a master plan for the next five years, which is how it's stated. Once we have the vision, that could be many different small events to a large event, then we can narrow it down to a one item at a time for 2015, six months, and then 2016, the first six months. This way, we will have a complete vision, first of all, for the master plan, and then we start to narrow it down into certain department. This is as an opening statement. Second, I would like to add that the master plan should not just limit to a certain event. The master plan should also include a lot of vision of Glendale public, Glendale artists, Glendaleians, Glendale residents, where they want to see in the next five years Glendale. I mean, we want to have a culture where it combines all the different minority culture within our city, and at the same time, present them in their heritage and their art in all departments. This is as one point of view. Second, we also want to advance in general art. That could be technology, that could be electronics, that could be many different things. So, the master plan will have probably subdivisions and the goals, and then once we have decided on the master plan, we can discuss later on, or continuation of this meeting, to a smaller events and narrow down how much we want to spend on each event, for example.
So, I just need some to clarify, because I want to make sure what I'm hearing is what I'm thinking. Are you recommending or suggesting that we, that we kind of table the discussion on all programs and do the master plan for the direction, to give us some direction about how to move forward?
Yes, yes, to have the discussion of master plan first. For example, I would like to see more culture events, one. I would like to see more technology, two. I would like to see more organizations that work within the Glendale, to be partners with them, because they are the real people, they work in Glendale. So those are the things, the headlines. Once we put those headlines and agree on that, then we can start to go into the other part.
I'm going to ask staff to comment here as well. I think, because, I'm going to say this first, I think that the arts and cultural plan that we did, which is a five-year plan, essentially is the underpinning for all of the programs we have in place, and so until we do the five, another five-year plan, which I think is more of what you're talking about, where we can sort of mix up what our goals are under which our programs fall. The public art master plan, as I'm understanding it, is geared a little bit more towards permanent acquisition of art, maybe, I might be wrong about that, but to help us identify where in the city things should happen, the goals around those specifically, as opposed to a lot of the programs we have in place right now. That's what I was thinking, but I'm going to ask staff to clarify.
I think it would include that, but I would, I think it would also, I mean, we wanted to be all-inclusive, so it would incorporate what we're already doing. It would redefine, perhaps, what we're already doing. It would ensure, I mean, the process would include public outreach, I mean, most master plans do, so that we get the input from all the different communities in Glendale, but that it would further define what's defined in the cultural plan on all levels. So, acquisition, the programming that we do, pop-up, whatever.
Yes, yes.
Identifying locations, identifying venues. As I said, we're kind of piecemeal right now, but if we had a real comprehensive inventory of all the locations, that would help tremendously. It would also identify policies that we might need related to public art, and then that would mean, I mean, that's something we talked about last time, but it would mean, you know, we'd really pinpoint which ones do we really want to focus on.
Exactly. Okay.
Commissioner DeHavane.
I need some clarification again. From what I understand, we already have the five-year plan. Now we are going step by step to see what we have achieved and where, how much more needs to be done. With what you're suggesting, is it that within whatever we have, we would be more inclusive and we would be more in touch with community organizations and cultural minorities and all that? Or are you proposing something completely different? That means we will forget what we have here, but we'll plan something for the next two years?
No, yeah. The only reason I'm bringing up this subject, because in the master plan, it says here, 2013-2018, so that's, we're still right in the middle of this program, but we need to talk about it. I mean, there might be a master plan, but if it's this, the plan, only this, then there might need some revisions and, you know, some suggestions to update and maybe move few things. But that's the only reason I'm asking, to discuss about the master plan first, and then go about the events.
And I think, I mean, I think if we agree that a public art master plan is necessary, then defining it will come later, exactly what we want that to include. My thought about the master plan is it's longer term than, the public art master plan is longer term than five years. But, you know, if we agree one, like I said, if we agree that one is necessary, then the next step would be to bring back a recommendation as to what that would include, and really get into the nuts and bolts of it.
Yes. Commissioner Oshagan.
So, I'm not very clear. So, this master plan, is it already here, or do we need to create it? I mean, you're saying that we need a long-term master plan, or is this it? I'm not really...
We have a, what we're calling, an arts and cultural plan, and it's very broad-stroke. It doesn't really, I mean, it has some goals, but it's very broad-stroke. So this would really drill down into more detail about how we want to move forward, including, I didn't, I may have mentioned it earlier, but including a financial strategy for how we implement the fund, you know, to pin down, okay, we want to spend X percentage every year. So it would be in much more detail, and it would also include more public participation than I think the arts and cultural plan did. We had some comment on that plan, but not a heck of a lot, and, you know, as Commissioner Chirikian has mentioned, I think we need more input, and hiring a consultant will allow us that opportunity to provide, to have more time to do that. So it's really, it's giving more detail than the cultural plan that we did.
So I'd like to get a little bit, something else. The branding idea that's in here, I'd be very interested to hear what our commissioners here are thinking about. What is the branding that we are thinking about that Glendale should have? I mean, a lot of, a lot of the arts programming that's going on, it seems, is piecemeal, like Cindy was saying. Do we have an idea of what the branding that we want to promote, what that could be? That could be this overall sort of, we're talking big ideas right now, right?
Well...
Or is this not the place for that? I don't know.
It's always the place for anything, however.
However, there's a "however."
No, I think it's a good point. It is one of our goals in our, in our, in our arts and culture plan, but I think for the purposes of this discussion, I think it's good to get on the table, and we should have a thoughtful conversation about it, but I think with the purposes of this discussion, I'd like to keep it to either the programs that we have under the Urban Art Fund specifically that either are on the table, or we want to add to the conversation, and to me, that would probably fall into another conversation, we start talking about the policies and other general fund programs that we'll be implementing, not necessarily under the Urban Art Fund. If that makes sense at all.
Very technical, but yeah, I think so.
I know. Commissioner Lee.
Well, let me see if I can bring some light. Okay. As Art and Culture Commission, we have set up a five-year goal, and those are the items in page four, six items. So we have a overall picture of what we're supposed to be trying to accomplish. Now, when this was in place, we didn't have access to the Urban Arts Fund yet. Then that came in. So once that came in, we tried to utilize that fund to meet our six objectives, or six goals. And I think right now, we're at the point where our funding is, we're going to try to accomplish those six goals still, and then try to narrow down and where specifically we can put actual money values to make functions happen, make goals happen. So I think that's the, where we're at right now. Now, in regards to that, then we just got added that we should have a master plan for the Urban Arts Fund, not a master plan for our commission. So keep that in mind. Those, that's, I think, where we're colliding right now, is we're trying to come up with another plan and go, hey, but we already have a five-year, we need to continue that first. In the meantime, that, this next master plan has to fit within that first goal set, and then we can advance on, unless we go back and revisit our five-year goal for the actual Art and Culture Commission. So those are the, I think, what we're coming across right now. I have a feeling that we want to revisit our five-year goal, and then, but that's not what we're here for.
I...
I don't know if that helps.
Commissioner Chirikian.
Yes. I understand, and I agree, that what we had decided a few years ago... I understand, and I agree, that what we had decided a few years ago, we will continue based on what our goals are, which is fine. But the next step is to have, which we have on page 10, provide a long-term financial strategy, identify long-term priorities. Those are the things that we cannot just do it in one session of meeting. We need the input of the public, we need some research, and then come down and sit down and talk about, okay, this is where we envision, and this is where we're heading. So, therefore, it's very important maybe to talk, at the same time, every, maybe every other meeting or so, we need to talk about the master plan, have a guest come over, explain a few things, have a hearing about the public, let the public have an input, and then, within four months or five months, have a grand master plan. This grand plan will be for the next 10 years. So, therefore, it's very important to have a complete vision, and then decide where we're heading.
If I could suggest, that if we agree that this is a possibility, that at the next meeting, or maybe in the February meeting, we bring you some examples of other cities, and how they deal with the overarching plan, and then the public arts plan. Because most of the cities, Long Beach, Pasadena, Santa Monica, they have what you already have in place, the arts and cultural plan, or whatever they call it, and then something that really drills down into the more specifics. And then, we can talk about what we want that include, because there are a lot of different options.
Of course.
As to what can be included in this kind of...
That's a good option.
Okay, great.
That's a good option start, which is very good.
Terrific. Yeah, and I was a little, getting a little confused. I think when you first spoke, I thought you wanted to do that before we actually made any decisions about the program, which maybe you did, but I think it's not constructive in terms of, we'd have to stop all of our programs.
Yeah, yeah, you're absolutely right.
Essentially, okay. So, so, yes, agreed, the master plan, Commissioner Lee.
The master plan, I think the recommendation is to hire a consultant to help us with that.
Yes, yes.
So, it's not that we're going to decide that anytime soon. We're going to hire a consultant, they'll give us, get us all the information that we need, and then we can start to work on the actual plan. I think that's...
Right, so, exactly. And so, what I'm hearing is there is some consensus at this point, and we'll talk about it as we get through the agenda meeting today, but for a master plan, we will indeed, as Ms. Cleary suggests, have to bring it back, so everybody's on the same page about what an actual public art master plan can be. Because even within the different cities, they all have slightly different approaches, which is, some are more vague, some are very specific. So, we'll have to determine what it is our goals are, then put out an RFP for a consultant, who can then guide us through the process of public participation, through the achievement of the goals, and then we can set that in place. So, thank you for, yeah, okay. So, I want to go, I want to go back, I... Yes, Commissioner Duhovasian.
Before we move on, could I, is it possible to get it on some agenda? I'm not sure what agenda would be on, to discuss the branding, discuss what is Glendale's identity as an art city? Is it possible to do that, to have some discussion?
That's very possible. But the other idea, I mean, another idea is, that could be part of the public art master plan process, to identify the need for a branding, that's beyond what we already have. I mean, we certainly can bring it back too, but it might be that we do this first, and then do the branding. I mean, really invest the funds that we need in the branding. So, that could be a recommendation as part of the work plan, as part two of the master plan, or before, either one. But put some money aside for that purpose.
And you would...
Either from the general fund or the Urban Art Fund.
To intercede on this, I think, and I think it's an interesting, I think it's a topic that we've danced around. I think it's certainly viable as a discussion item, not necessarily an action item for a future agenda, if other commissioners are, just to, so we can just get the ideas out, and then, from there, the furthering of that discussion, it might be through the, through the public art master plan, and figure out how that might be implemented, and how that might be funded, and what the specifics are of that. I think you're talking about it more conceptually, about, you know, what do we want, what is our brand? What is Glendale's art brand? And some of that might, would certainly come through that process of the master plan. But I think if you're having a discussion here preliminarily, is certainly not going to hurt anything and get that on the table. Commissioner Lee.
My concern then becomes, can we, without a consultant, handle setting up a master plan? Because I see us, you know, if we do hire a consultant, we're talking another $50,000, $60,000, is it something that we can do internally versus, because I think they already have some research with the other cities of what they're planning to do, and, you know, in that same essence, that's...
I'd like to be able to say yes, but I think in researching, and I have done some research about other cities and how they deal with it, it's a pretty intensive process, especially if you're going to include public outreach, and, you know, the research that's involved in looking at other cities, and looking at policies, and unfortunately, we just don't have the staff capacity. We probably don't even have the staff expertise to do what's required. So, my recommendation would be to hire a consultant with that background.
And there is value in having a third party that is, that does this all the time, and is not necessarily invested in the way that we are, that can help us see beyond ourselves a bit. But with that, I actually want to stop this line of conversation, and then just kind of go back again. Are there any other questions, big picture umbrella, of questions related to the presentation, related to the art plan, Urban Art Fund, any of that at the moment? Okay, then, the next thing I want to ask about then, are what, we've heard one already, which is the Open Art Tour. Are there other programmatic concepts, just big picture buckets of programs that are missing from this plan, that you'd like to have added to the discussion?
In my mind, if I may...
Commissioner Shirikian.
In my mind, there are a few things that we probably need to be very careful that we don't over-expend money, or some of the program, for example, of the mural program, city-owned properties, which we have not implemented yet. We technically had one plan, which, back in 2014, January, Glendale Art Alliance was the one that we applied, or was it for the signature event? Was it a signature event? Where we agreed to give them the project, but we have not had any result yet, or it hasn't been implemented. So, we need to be very careful. We need to give some timetable or scheduling that we need in the next three months or four months, something to be visible to the public. Now, for example, as Commissioner Stephen mentioned, we're not going to see a major event till 2016, and we have a whole year and a half, almost, that we might not do something major. That worries me. That worries me in a way that we are trying to improve the art and culture instead of Glendale, and especially a major event, how we approach this. We need to resolve it, and maybe spend or allocate an organization or somebody to do an event in 2015.
So, am I hearing that you're asking that we add to the plan right now, another signature arts event in 2015?
For 2015, yes.
Whether it's open studio tours or something else?
Whatever, yes, yes. Maybe in the convention center, something, I don't know, some type of...
So, I'm going to add that to my list, and then we'll come back and have a discussion about it.
Sure.
Are there other, other ideas?
Would permanent artworks in the city be part of then the Urban Art Plan, or be then part of this discussion here?
It's part, yeah, it's part of this discussion. It's one of the items that the Urban Art Plan that we were just talking about would inform that discussion, and the discretionary funds, I think, were proposed in the, in this plan, in the, in the two-year plan, to look at the acquisition of permanent art. But I think that the mass, the public art master plan was hoping to be in place, in terms of the timeline of how things would roll out, is that that would occur, which would help give us some, some better ideas about locations, and what that permanent art might be, and then that would fall under the discretionary permanent art program in this two-year plan. Does that make sense? Am I, add something, Ms. Cleary?
Yeah, I think we really, I mean, for instance, this past year, we were offered the opportunity to purchase a piece for the Brand Library and Art Center, that everybody would have loved to purchase. But we decided not to purchase it, because there was no plan, there was no overall plan in how to acquire art for the city. So, that's part of what the public art master plan could do, is develop a plan.
How to acquire? What does that mean?
No, what the parameters for acquiring would be.
What pieces to acquire?
Yeah. Is there a review, I mean, what's the review process? Who's on the review committee, and all those kinds, I mean, how much money do we want? I mean, that's why there's no amount here. How much money do we want to budget or allocate for that? Or do we want to go out and seek public art? I mean, do we want to, you know, have a competitive process, you know? Or do we just want to wait until somebody comes along and says, I have this great piece, and would you like to put it at the Brand Library and Art Center? So, figuring all that stuff out.
So, we have it right now, and under the plan, it's, there's the two discretionary, and the discretionary acquisition of permanent art is to be determined based on the recommendations of the public art master plan, in terms of the budget, and then the parameters of that, of that program would be determined through that process. So, it is part of the program, it's just fledgling at this point.
And if I could...
I have a quote.
Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Commissioner, Commissioner Shikhan, why don't you finish your thought?
Okay, so, the process of getting some, a process in place to acquire permanent art will not start until 2016, is that what that means? Because there's no budget for that now.
Well, yeah, depending on how long it takes us to put together a plan. So, it could start earlier if we got the plan put together faster, but I think that's going to be at least a one-year process. I mean, it's a rather complex process, from what I gather from other cities.
Commissioner Shirikian.
My question is regarding, on page 14, total funding available. This is only to clarify, not that I'm asking a question, but total funding available is $3,166,000 and $332 dollars. Please, if I'm mistaken, please let me know and clarify. A few months ago, when the city council were discussing about raising tax on the water and power utilities, do we remember that, that we had a five-year plan, 8%, 5%, 3%, some type of program like that? And what I've heard during that, one of those meetings, that city manager was talking about, if we do not approve that kind of taxes, we might not have an art and culture program. Is that something true? I mean, no. This, this funding is coming from a different revenue, so it has nothing to do with that city tax. Okay.
Right.
I was worried for a moment, because...
I would be too, but not to my knowledge.
Okay, that's fine.
Are there other programs that are missing from this list that you'd like to have on the table for discussion today?
You mean to add, or...
Add, yeah. So, what I'm looking for right now is, we've got this list of cultural and performing arts, murals on city utility boxes, discretionary funds, all of these things that are listed in the proposed work plan. If there's any bucket of programs that appear to be missing, that you'd like to have for discussion, for instance, what I would like to put on the table, simply because it came to us from the public in a recent meeting, was the Rose Bowl float, for instance. And we said that we, you know, we'll bring that back up as part of, you know, this planning process, because that's the good time to do that. I don't, that's more of a specific program, so maybe it's some sort of program bucket, that's a community arts-based identity type of program. But that's something that we can just talk about through the meeting today, I would add it to the list. Are there other types of programs that have come up that people would like added?
Should we discuss about the Rose Boat, or it's just an example?
That's, well, I'm putting it on the table to discuss, and I'm going to add it to the list, and then we're going to go back and hit each program, and talk more in detail about each program. So, right now, I'm just trying to make sure everything that we want to talk about is on the list, so we don't miss anything in this discussion.
Could I put my idea about the Rose Boat? Well, actually, yes, it is, it's an artwork, and it is the culture of city of Glendale. But based on the direction that we have, and please correct me if I'm, you know, especially with the flu, I don't know if I remember things as well, but basically, we are trying to promote the artists within our city, and also, we are trying to help the economy of the city through art, meaning that by having events in our city, exhibitions and performances and et cetera, so we are bringing people to our community, so it's like, or even purchasing a piece of art that people want to come to Glendale to see it for a long time. So, they go to our restaurants, and they go to our hotels, and all that stuff. As far as that, I don't know how that would fit within that plan. But otherwise, it's a great idea, but to spend the big-time money, and every year, to commit to that, while it is not a long-term kind of a situation for neither helping the economy nor the artists in the community, I don't know if we can go for that.
I will make a note on that, and then we're going to come back to that particular program, and others can add their two cents on that as well. Are there other program types that people would like to have, Commissioner Shirikian?
One thing I've noticed, again, on page, the proposed budget for 2015-17, that under 15-16 recommended budget, we don't have anything temporary public art in public places, because we are, and then we put $100,000 in 2016-17. Are we still splitting that, or we're not?
What that is saying is that because, right now, the temporary art in public places is very short-term art. So, what this is saying is it would be a two-year cycle, and the art would be in place for 18 to 24 months. Parallel to that is the program that we're working on right now, which probably will be extended through, it will be extended at least through 15-16, because we haven't installed anything yet, it's in process, and we're only in phase one. So, the shorter-term temporary art pieces will extend into the first year.
Other programs, questions? What I want to do then is go back then to the top of the, to the top of, sorry, to the top of the work plan, and just kind of walk through each of these a little bit, a little bit, a little more detail, just to see if there's anything that we don't want to have that's been proposed, if there are big changes to how it's been proposed, to make sure we're on the same page about what the programs are, so that if we have to prioritize later in the meeting, we're all kind of on the same page about that, and we also have the key aspects of those programs on the table. So, starting with the cultural and performing arts series, we actually talked about this at great length in a previous meeting. So, I think, my understanding from that, we kind of came out of that, that we were all on the same page, that we wanted to continue that program, that we gave a lot of detail about changes that we wanted, which I think were reflected a bit in the report, so staff has a good sense of what the next steps would be on that. So, I guess my question is the, is, and the funding seeming appropriate at this point for the continuation of this program? Or are there other questions or comments about, I'm not getting too much in the weeds on the program itself? Commissioner Duhovasian.
If we want to incorporate some of the vision that all of us have, that Commissioner Shirikian also kind of expressed, the programmings and what, the way we, venues that we have, I think it is very inclusive and very nice. But what we do there, we can be more inclusive as far as having different community organizations participate, or do other stuff that you were talking about. So, within each of these, because I think it's so comprehensive, we have taken care of so many different aspects, such as, like the utility boxes, or the big murals, or short-term kind of exhibitions and performances, you know? So, we have a variety that we can express art within our city in any dimension that we want to, within the categories that is already here. It's just how we do it, and how much money we want to spend on it, is what makes a difference. Now, if you want to be more inclusive, you want to expand it to more areas that we could have this kind of art, then even though we talked about in detail about the money, how much we should spend, then maybe that could be, if there's a possibility that we could have additional funding to whatever we are doing, then we could express and have more stuff. Otherwise, we have to go within whatever we already have. Am I clear?
So, what I'm hearing is that you're wondering if we're going to be more inclusive and expand the program to other sites, and other types of cultural events, and more organizations, that we might need more funding to do that? Is that what I'm hearing?
If that would be, if that would be the desire of the commission, well, that's how we do it. But as far as how we could do things in art, I think all these categories are so well-thought, and they can, they can include all the world of vision that we might have for the art in Glendale. So, as categories, they're great. Now, within the categories, do we want to add on? And if we do, this is the time, I think, we should talk about, and if there is a possibility of expanding the amounts of money that we have, or the expenditures.
Right, so, I mean, yeah, and so, yeah, and starting, so, starting with the cultural and performing arts series, if there are, we had on the table... arts series, if there are, we, we had on the table, I think, and I think it's included in this budget, the idea that it's not just the brand, that it would be other locations, other organizations, and that staff is suggesting that the $25,000 each year, $50,000 total is, is sufficient to be able to expand on our current program. Am I, am I right about that?
Yes. And in the last cycle, we budgeted $20,000, so it is in one year, so it is a $5,000 increase with the assumption that each program would be up to $1,000 for the artists.
Commissioner Oshigun.
So is this the budget we spoke about last meeting? Or is this above, beyond that budget for the performing arts?
This is, yeah, the, the one we talked about last time was part of the 13-15 work plan. And so we used, we were planning to use discretionary funds to extend, no, 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 I'm sorry, what was remaining in this fund to extend the program in the 13-15 cycle. So this is, this is all new.
This is starting after those eight performances and this is the budget for the next?
Exactly, yeah. So my, so my question is, as, as it's proposed here in this draft plan at the $25,000 budget and given the input that we provided in the last meeting, is everybody, I'm just looking basically for consensus, so we can move on to the next program unless somebody wants to call anything out, or like, I want more money, I want less money, I, forget it, I hate this anyway, I don't like this program anymore.
I have, I agree with this as, as it is.
So agreed, all, we raise our hands or just what?
Commissioner Oshigun.
Yeah. What would be very interesting to me to, sort of, as an, as a direction in this performing art is to include, I think, maybe more technology. You know, I mean, a hundred people showing up is great, but I think if you can make some of these performances or draw the art artists who are using more contemporary technologies and arts, things of that sort, that would probably draw more people, young people, into these performances. So I would suggest perhaps a little directional shift to, to try to, to draw more technology-based, digital image, sound art kind of people, artists into these performances.
Multimedia.
Multimedia, yeah.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to put, because I actually, I didn't share this with you all, but I actually created a little matrix to help keep me clear on what's happening. So what I'm doing, so you know, is I'm actually creating, so I have an other notes section on each of these programs and so I'm popping that into my other notes, which would then go to staff. When we get into developing that program, these are the kinds of things that will go into that creation of that RFP and what we're putting out as a call to artists and what we're looking for. So I've got that down and I have, ensuring that we have the inclusivity of other organizations and such. So, so with that, and your question about how do we give consensus, actually, I am just going to run down the row and just check with everybody and we got a thumbs up from Commissioner Sherekin, Oshigun, Commissioner Lee. Great. So we are, we are good with that as it's set. So the next one is the Murals on City Property. And this is the program that has yet to be implemented and will be started here in the spring. And so my question then again is, is this something, you know, presuming that we still want to continue it since we haven't even implemented it yet, but I don't want that to be just an assumption. So, so the, so the question is, are there big changes to this program? Is it not enough money? Is it too much money? Do we want to get rid of it? And I open up the floor to that. Commissioner Sherekin.
May I start? I was driving in North Hollywood. There is either a wash or something and I've noticed that they have murals right against the wall of the wash. And I was talking, maybe, I just saw it a few months ago, and it runs maybe almost half a mile. In a way, it was attracting, it was nice to see, but you had park around it, so you could watch it and see it. I don't know if a wash wall is public property or the City of Glendale. I don't think so, but that's something, I don't know. I'm just saying it so we might need to consider one of those examples. The next idea I want to throw within is, although we have not implemented the previous year, the mural program yet, even if we find a wall that is doable, I don't know how we're going to do it. And murals are nice because they were probably in 70s and 80s, but looking in the future, a mural is like, okay, it's a nice artwork, but it doesn't talk to the heart of the future generation. So mural program is a limited visionary, you cannot express everything on there. So therefore, I'm trying to see if mural program is a good program. At this point, we might need to use it only half the amount of that money for a smaller-scale wall. Then the rest, we can use it for, for the future program. I don't know, something with, what the, Commissioner Oshigun mentioned about technology, something different to attract not only the future artists and also the future generation, the younger generation. This is something I need to see if mural art is feasible within our city limit, because in the past two years, it hasn't been done. So we're still testing the water. I don't know how much we will be able to implement and succeed in this. So therefore, I need to maybe express more myself. I don't know. It's, it's a little more complicated in my mind.
Commissioner Lee.
Well, to, to add that, what I, what I can see is, you know, like Times Square, we're talking to electronic billboard, that can change. It's electronic you run, you can always change the work, artwork. I, I would be more inclined to invest in something like that and find a location for it. And that will go with the times. We can always enhance art and move it from there.
Commissioner DeJovanasian.
Well, art has different forms of expression and different people like different forms of art. But, you know, recently, going to Napa and Carmel and San Francisco, there are certain things that it makes a city kind of a signature for its special art form. I'm not talking just like something similar to a graffiti or a nice beautiful nature on a wall of a garage. I'm talking something within the 3D art form on, on any building, anything that could make people to talk about, because those electronic things are fantastic, but, you know, they're, they're everywhere. Now, we could find, with having that, let me tell you that, we will have a committee, we will have a commissioner participating, and we would let the community come with ideas. So how we get there would be what basically community likes to see, and it would be also what we can afford and what is our vision at a given time that we want to give to our city. So it could be any form of it, but it could make it specific, that people would like to come and see that specific wall or that specific 3D work that is added to one of our historic buildings or anything of the nature. So in any form of it, it is a signature event or it's a signature identity that it gives to our city. And if we do it right, it would be phenomenal. If we don't, it won't. And to do it right, naturally, it would cost more than all the others. That's why I do believe $45,000 has been allocated to that.
A question.
Commissioner Oshigun.
So do we have any walls that these murals could go on? Is there, has anything been clarified on this project at all?
Yeah, no, we haven't because of the staffing transition that we recently went through. No, we have not done any exploration. One of the thing, one of the walls I have my eye on is the wall that, as you walk into the back of City Hall, there's a nice blank canvas there, which would get a lot of exposure. But, but we don't have specific locations yet. The plan was to come back to you in February or March with different ideas about how to proceed. I mean, the other, the other thing to consider is, does the $45,000 go to five murals or does the $45,000 go to one really well-known muralist, like Shepherd Ferry or Kent Twitchell, and bring that kind of notoriety to Glendale? So that's something we have to discuss at a later date.
I would like to add something to this. The way I suggested the mural program is not to completely eliminate. I understand it's very important to have mural to a certain, in, in a certain place with a certain art form, whatever it was, it is. But at the same time, just stopping at mural program, one of the examples I would like to bring in is, where's the Glendale High School going north towards In-N-Out? You pass under the bridge, there is a mural, I've seen it there for the past maybe 15 years, maybe more. I like the place, I like the location, I like what it is. It's about family, unity, and, but it doesn't connect. After five years, there's something missing. So therefore, murals are to a limited time, in my opinion, and it does not reflect a long planning duration. So therefore, it's very important to see what project and where we're doing it, because otherwise, we will spend 20, $30,000 for something, yes, it's an art form, mural is nice, but it might not, it might not come out the way we want it to.
So, so what my thought on this is that, what I want to know is if we, in some form, whatever it may be, whether it's an electronic billboard of some sort that gets changed with art, that might cost more down the road, it may not, or if it's something that is smaller murals or one large mural. The question I want to pose is whether we want to keep this category or even if you don't want to like eliminate it. So if we want to keep it and we think that the funding is appropriate to encompass whatever this program might be, then I, I would like to mark it off and say, yeah, we're going to keep it. And then what will happen is that when staff comes back with a report about, these are locations we've identified that are feasible, these are the types of, of murals that can occur, whether it's tile or glass or paint or, or 3D or whatever that, you know, that might be. And so then we're basically then building that program for that RFP that goes out, around which we can decide what we, what we want it to be, as long as we have, but we need to have the program bucket in place to do that. So, I mean, these are great ideas and we're marking them down, but I think the place for the, the deeper discussion, if we want to keep the program, is when it comes back to the, to the commission. Commissioner Oshigun.
Yeah, so there is a, at Lincoln Center, I believe in New York, there is this huge block. On one side is this sort of electronic, huge electronic screen on one side of it. And there are images there that, that are changing constantly. It's not like a billboard where you're up here, it looks like an advertisement. It's actually part of the Lincoln Center and, and people interact with it and actually interact with it. So I think this is a great program, but if we can expand what is a mural, the concept of what a mural is, to make it much more contemporary, much more digital-based, technology-based, and think about something of this sort, rather than much more the traditional thing that's going to go on the wall, we may have painting or something that, that has been done. We want to, we want to go with something different, I think, in Glendale. We want to be innovative, right? This program says innovative, new, culturally new, an identity for Glendale that is looking to the future, right? I think so, we need to sort of try to expand our definitions of things.
Commissioner DeJovanasian.
I definitely agree with you, but basically, as it said, if we go with this idea, then we, this is where we all sit together, come to a consensus of what do we think of being as commissioners. You know, we kind of leave our footprints in whatever we do, the time we have been. So that would be our signature kind of thing that we have given to the community by the discussions. This is going to be discussed and agreed and everybody would be happy about it. Just the idea is that, should we have something of that nature that we could be signified or we could be understood or we could be acknowledged by having a billboard, electronic, or we should have whatever? Those are the details of it. But should we go with this plan or not? Which I do believe we should, as that's my vote.
Commissioner Lee is nodding. Ms. Cleary has a comment.
I have a comment.
Commissioner Sherekin.
My, my next point will be the budget. I definitely agree to have some type of mural, which is, yes, in my mind, but $45,000, if I'm the artist and I would like to present something, not electronic, I'm not talking electronics, it depends on the size. If I have only 20 by 20 and I need to work with a 3D, $100,000 isn't, is not enough. It depends what media I'm using, what I'm doing. So therefore, assigning a budget to a mural program, not knowing what we're going to receive, I'd rather put maybe $30,000, $25,000 based on what we receive, then I can say, okay, this is something that is really going to make a change or make a difference in Glendale, then I would vote for $100,000. Or we can take from the discretionary fund and put it there. But having a $45,000, which we still don't have a vision of it, that makes me very reserved to see what, where we're heading. So therefore, my suggestion will be is to lower the budget until we find or we get something. So therefore, it's numbered in the air, but I don't want to go that high. $45,000, it's not a lot of money, but it's, it is if you're spending on a small scale. So that's my approach.
I meant comment on that in that, I, I hear what you're saying, because I think it is difficult to say, this is what we're going to do and we haven't fleshed out what the program is. But on the other hand, I would actually take the separate, the opposite tact and say, I would rather have set aside more money so that once, and that the, because we're going to have to write a recommendation, it's going to have to go to city council, we have to have something in place by June. I don't know that we'll have something fleshed out and, and everything in time. If we have too little in there and we want to be bigger, we can't, without at least going back through a full process of, of revision. So that's, that's my thought on that. Ms. Cleary?
Yeah, I was going to comment on the budget as well. I mean, if, if there's consensus to go along with what Commissioner Oshigun said, then you will need more than $45,000. The issue with the electronic process is it kind of falls into the billboards of Glendale and there's all sorts of codes and ordinances that we need to follow. So that would definitely have to be a city council discussion or get there, they're okay with it. The other thing that we can do is we could defer the $45,000 that's in this budget, add it to the next year budget, so that you do increase from the 45 a year and add the 45 from the 13-15 to this particular budget. So if you want to put more in it, as Commissioner Dever is mentioning, Chair Dever is mentioning, that's an option too.
Let's do it.
Dr. DeJovanasian.
Taking the suggestions here, what if, as we said, we'll go for more, but for this year, we'll do the research, we'll look into the legalities of how these kind of things work, and then we'll start with a project that is kind of very catchy and very beautiful and on a magnitude big scale. So that way, the money next year would be actually much more and we can use it for something that we have well-thought, well-planned and well-researched.
Yeah, I mean, and then depending what this mural is, it could fall under the, the permanent artwork, right? Because it's, it's on, it may be on a wall or maybe someplace else where it's going to be permanent artwork in the City of Glendale, right? So I think, I don't know how you could, if you don't know what it is that we're going to do, how would you give a budget? I'm not sure.
But it will certainly fall under the, the Public Art Master Plan that, that will come out in that process as well. But it is one of those things where we have, we have a plan that we have to kind of keep rolling while we plan at the same time. It could be challenging, Ms. Cleary.
I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So are we saying that we'll defer the 13-15 mural program?
We haven't.
We haven't.
We have not said.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're getting to that. But what I'm hearing as a possibility is that we do the research this year.
Right.
And then, and then add the additional 45 in the following year and then we can always go back and say, is this enough or is this too little?
Yeah, and that is actually, I, because I do, I personally do like that idea. So for, so in, in terms of that consensus, that will raise our, our 90 budget higher, again, I'm not doing the math in my head, but is, is, is everybody on the same page? Commissioner Lee?
Well, I, I would try to leave it as is. If, if we don't come up with a good idea by the end of our 2015-2016 budget, then, you know, we roll it over. I'm, I'm sorry. From the, from the 13-15 budget, roll it over to the 15-16 if that's needed. Like I said, again, right now, you know, in the next couple of months, maybe some hot idea comes up. I don't, I don't want us to roll over, pass the money over and then have to defer the program.
But we, what we need to know is if you want us to move forward with the program, because the plan was to come back in February and really initiate the mural program. But rather than do that, what I'm hearing is a possibility is we come back in February and we tell you what is doable and what isn't doable.
That's fine.
So I think that's the decision for this year at least.
One more time, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
She had the flute.
The plan, the plan right now is for us to come back, I think we said in February, Chuck, with a proposal for an RFP for, actually... Chuck, with a proposal for an RFP for actually implementing a mural program. So we can do that, or in February, we can come back after having done some research about all the different possibilities, and then consider whether we want to take the forty-five that's budgeted for this year and put it into the, the fifteen seventeen budget.
Great. That, that works for me. How's everybody else feeling about that?
That works for me.
Going down, going down, Commissioner Lee?
Sounds like a good plan.
The latter, the latter? Yeah, so what we will, what we will ask of staff is the, yeah, the next, in February meeting, to bring forth more detail about what a potential program can be, so we can discuss it in more depth. And then at that point, we can make revisions to, to this proposed budget. But for now, we will hold it at the forty-five forty-five with a pending of the rollover of the current annual plan budget. I'm just going to make a note. And it should be a very fun and interesting conversation. People tune in for that. Okay.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that one.
Yeah. So the next, so we're going to move on to the next program, which is the mural and city utility boxes, which has also received a ton, a lot of discussion at, on this dais over the, over recent meetings. So again, assuming that, well, we don't even assume it, I know we want to continue with this, we've talked about that. I think we've kind of had things on the table about how we're going to roll out with different neighborhoods, and the interest of different commissioners about what those neighborhoods might be. We have twenty-five thousand dollars and twenty-five thousand dollars, so fifty thousand dollars total in this proposed plan. Is this seeming reasonable to everybody? Are there changes?
No.
No changes.
Okay. Commissioner Oshigan?
Yeah, so we had a, last meeting, we talked about this, and we had a budget, and this is, so this is the same as the performing arts, then, and then this adds on to it?
Right.
No, I like to add that, I really like the, the utility box program. I think it's, it's really great. And I think if it's sort of, so it's kind of very micro-scale engagement of artists and community, and local artists, and, and the public, you know, and you combine that with sort of a macro engagement with the same public, you could have something really interesting over the long run. So I think it's a great program, we should keep going with it.
Great. So the consensus I have is that we will keep that as
I just want to add one comment, nothing related with the program, if you don't mind. The only difference I see in the, this utility boxes program is when we call, make a call for artists, we have a ten-year-old competing against a fifty or sixty-year-old professional, which, of course, you want to beautify Glendale, and sometimes you don't feel comfortable that they are in the same pool. I mean, that's how I felt, at least. Well, this is, again, this is a little bit more detailed into a certain program. Maybe we should have a announcement that we will choose at least two or five, or certain number of younger, new generation comparing. I mean, I just want to be fair with everybody, because the participation was there. We saw a lot of schools that they participated with their brand-new artists, you know, freshman artists. And I want to give them a chance at the same time. But when you compare and start to see a nice artwork against a beginner, you might always have that feeling that he might not have a chance. This is, again, we will talk probably maybe during the detail, but down the line, we will.
It is noted. Thank you. So moving on to our next program is the pop-up arts and cultural event. And this is the extension of the art in vacant storefronts, or the gala project that we have going right now, because we have, we're limited in terms of, of venues, and so we're not even working our way through that, that, that full program plan. So the, so the proposal on the table is to expand that outside of, of just the storefronts. It could still encompass the storefronts, I presume, if, if that were to, to be available, but this would be more of an engaged, experiential type of, of temporary art within the city of Glendale. So are there thoughts about this change, about the budget, et cetera? Commissioner Oshigan?
Another question. So could you, what's the status right now? How many storefronts have actual temporary art in them?
The, the consultant is John O'Brien, and he's committed to do eight exhibits. He's done two on Maryland Avenue, and I'm going to turn to Chuck with any update on where we're going from here.
He's asked us to maybe contact the city departments and see if we can really get down and talk to the property owners. He's having some difficulty getting through, he works primarily with whoever's on, on site for these empty buildings, or, or the, the managers rather than the owners. So there's a, maybe some issues about getting to the right people that'll say, yeah, because, because a number of the, the properties he's looking at have been vacant, or they've been sort of, you know, they don't look like they're being used to the, the best extent they could be used, and they've been like that for a while. But it's still seems to be difficult to get people to budge on this. He had hoped that after the first of the year, some of these properties would kind of loosen up, because they would not have had, or they would have been finished with any sort of holiday-themed pop-up businesses. I didn't see those go up. So we've got to do a little bit of work to help him get to the right people, I think. He's, he did suggest he could put, we've got a little bit more time with the Maryland locations. He said, I can put another art or artists in, in the, in that location. But again, that would be the exact same location, it wouldn't be anything different, and it would count against, you know, the number of venues he's supposed to come up with.
I have a question. Does his contract need, if, if he is not able to do more within the, with, by the end of the fiscal year, does that contract need to be extended, or is the commitment discontinuing?
Yeah, we're going to have to look into that.
Okay.
I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay.
But I, I think the reason that we wanted to add and expand this program is because of the difficulties he's having. And, you know, we can, we can eliminate vacant storefront from this, or we can put out a call for a variety of, of things to happen. And, you know, I, I think in the future, I think what we need to do is have the storefronts available before we do the call for artists. Really, I mean, it kind of goes to the Public Art Master Plan. We need, we need to know what the locations are before we jump into some of these things.
First, the nature of vacant storefronts is that you don't, don't know. A lot of times, these are, these are handled by private organizations, nonprofits, rather than through this, which is making it more challenging. But, so just to be clear, because I don't want to get off track, with, with the current program as it is, the gala program, we'll have to handle that separately, whether, you know, there's some sort of revision to his contract to be able to expand that out to other spaces, or if he's going to keep reusing the same spaces, or how we're going to deal with the fact that we haven't gotten the whole thing by the end of the fiscal year, or whenever that contract ends. So back to the, the program, the idea of expanding this concept, or, as I'm saying, eliminating any of the vacant storefront component to it, or making it as part of, you know, the possibility. What, what, what do commissioners want?
Go ahead.
Commissioner DeHovenasian?
My suggestion last time was, the way I see it, it would be great if we would allocate that money for other programs that we are going to adopt, or we already have.
Commissioner Oshigan?
So is this person, what was his name, the curator for this storefront?
John O'Brien. John O'Brien.
Is he also qualified to do the experiential part, that is come out of the storefronts? If that is the direction we want to go, or does that have to be completely redone?
Yeah, we'd have to issue another RFP for all of these programs.
Regardless.
Regardless.
Because he's been commissioned just to do the storefronts, only?
Right, and a finite program. So this would, this would mean issuing another RFP.
Yeah, so every time we do a new plan, or new, a new funding allocation, even if we loved the program, we loved, you know, the, the consultant that did it, we still have to issue, as my understanding, new RFPs, because it is still a newly funded program, a new year. So they might be successful in that bid, and, or they might be, somebody else brings something new to the table, and we'd have to re-up it again, either way. So I'm, what I'm hearing so far from Commissioner DeHovenasian is that she would rather see this program as, as presented, just eliminated, and that mon, money reallocated to some other program use?
Yes, and, and basically, there are so many venues that they can be improved to promote art and artists within our community. So we could spend that money for that instead of doing, or we could have the temporary art exhibitions for areas that we were going to have. So that's basically what I suggested last time, and I would like to see.
So I, so I just want to, yeah, I just, actually, I want to clarify real quick. So am I hearing that you want, just the way that it's been presented, which is an expanded program, art and vacant storefronts, and experiential art in other locations around the city? Do you want to nix that whole program, or are you nixing the art and vacant storefront component of it?
The art and, I'm, I think we could omit the art in the storefront, and get into other programs that we already have.
So eliminate the art and vacant storefront component, but do you, are you proposing that we still consider on the table the, the, the pop-up art, essentially?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Commissioner Shirekian?
In my mind, pop-up arts, it does not limit to storefront. There are so many other means for pop-up arts. And we have good examples from City of Santa Monica, maybe Pasadena, that how they have performers on the street. And I don't know how it's going to work, but pop-up arts means if we have a program, we have allocated a few thousand dollars, and we can try for six months or four months during summertime. And then based on that evaluation, we can continue and adjust as needed. So pop-up arts, it's a lot more than just storefront. So yes, I would like to keep the program, but change it to, into a different, something different.
Just strictly pop-up art?
Yeah, exactly.
As opposed to any vacant storefront component?
So you agree with me? You're in agreement with me?
Yes.
Yeah, good.
Commissioner Oshigan?
So the difference between a temporarily public art and public spaces, and the storefront, is basically the difference between a public space and a private space. Is that correct, then?
It's actually the length, I, I believe it's more the length of time, so the temp-
They're both temporary.
But I think of it as semi-permanent, but yeah, it's, there's the longer-term temporary, which is a year to a year and a half or so, that, that's where it'd be more installation-based, long-term, impactful. People have a year to kind of come and see it, they've heard about it, they want to visit and, and participate in whatever that is. Whereas the pop-up is, you know, you never know, on Friday night, there's going to be somebody strumming a guitar on the B-line, and another time, there's, you know, it would still go out theoretically through social media and such, but as part of that program, whoever curates it. But it's, it's more of that type of event.
Okay, so pop-up, pop-up is just one or two days, or just a few hours? Is that what that is?
Can I give an example?
I just want to, yeah, I want to get clear what the terms are.
Absolutely. No, it's a great question. Let me give you an example of, of the way, or of a program that I think is a great example of this. So in New York City, there are a lot of street artists that perform in the subways. And so this, this conductor actually decided that he wanted to conduct all these people. So he put like twenty computers in front of him that were interacting with each subway station, and he conducted an orchestra. So that's the kind of thing that I, I mean, I think that's the kind of thing that we're thinking about here. Something that's, you know, very short-term, it could be only a day, that really has an impact, that everybody's like doing their social media thing and sending the word out. I mean, that, that's the kind of program I see this as being.
That's the pop-up art?
Yeah.
So, but the storefront is much longer?
The storefront would be, yeah. I mean, and that just, that'll depend, the storefront depends on how long the vacant storefront is available. I mean, in this case, what, Chuck, Mr. Waik, what, what was the extension of the Maryland storefront installations?
The properties are being sold, I believe, early February, so we had to move out, we have to move out by the end of, of this month. Interestingly, they were both city-owned spaces. There were, there, I, I did want to comment, there was no, there didn't seem to be a lack of artist interest, nor was there a lack of kind of ingenious sort of installations. It wasn't all just static art. There was, you know, maybe inviting people in to get their portraits done, doing dance around the art. What there was a lack of, or seeming lack of, was the ability to get into buildings.
But in that case, I think the exhibit started in November, so two, three months.
Commissioner DeHovenasian?
With the explanation with, for the pop art, now I start to worry about that, because to organize and to plan for that, it is a major function, I do believe, that to know how we want to allocate that money, and if it is pop-up, are we planning for the whole year, the pop-ups? And that's how we know how much money do we need for that? Do we have the staff to go through that and to make the choices, and for the commission to be involved, to make sure that it is appropriate, and it represents the city in the proper way? So that is kind of to be under the auspices of a commission to, maybe to me, it sounds kind of a little bit difficult. Yet, if we use that money for temporary art, I think we would be on a safer side. But if there is vision, and people know exactly how pop-up art could be conducted, and how it could be productive and useful, and represent our city properly. That means, anything that has to represent our city, it has to be a kind of observed, evaluated, discussed, and finalized before it gets to its performance. And it's a lot of work. I don't know if we can do that. And if I don't, if I'm not on the right track, enlighten me, because I don't know how we should do that, as a commission.
Well, this would be another RFP process where we would, would bring in someone to manage it. So hopefully, we would bring, I mean, we would want to bring in someone with this kind of experience.
So they would plan for, let's say, for the amount of money they would spread it throughout the year? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Other thoughts on this particular program? Commissioner Oshigan?
Yeah, I like, I like this idea of the pop art, especially the example that you brought, Cindy, that, especially the fact that I think sort of this idea that it's technology-based, perhaps, you know, something that is really neat and connects different places, different things, and you can do it, something that just exists just for a few hours. Really temporary art piece, right? Maybe the word should be temporary, long, short-term temporary and long-term temporary art. So that it's more clear, clear in our minds, and when we put the RFP out, we say, all right, you know, we want number of these things, we want maybe once a month, we want one, one evening thing happening somewhere in Glendale. It could be on Brand Boulevard, on the sidewalk, something happens where, you know, an artist can place for us, there's these tiles where you can walk on it and lights come up for us. That could be something, right? Just a few hours, and then it's taken out. And then, but then there's another one that could last for two months. And if there's a great storefront, why not, right? If not, then you do something else, so.
So what I'm hearing is that you would prefer to keep it open-ended and not restrict ourselves in terms of location, whether it's a vacant storefront, or it's an outdoor location, or it's a, you know, on city, the city hall site someplace. I mean, regard, it doesn't matter. And that, but in general, supportive of, of the concept, as long as we're differentiating it enough, either both in our plan and in the RFP process about what it, what it is between the two different programs. Certainly with the RFP that would go out, again, like with these other programs, we'll have an opportunity to talk about that program. And if we want to say, we want at least five pop-up art events over the next two years for this fifty thousand dollar contract, and we want some, something to be incorporating technology, we, our themes are, we want connectivity, communication, I mean, whatever they are, you know, that, that's a part of the discussion we can have as part of that, that program before the RFP goes out. So I'm, so I'm hearing both an elimination of the vacant storefront component opportunity, and also to retain that. Do we have other thoughts about restricting or, or pointing toward where we would like the location of these events to be?
I like the way Commissioner Oshigan was talking about. So if we don't kind of limit us to one form, pop art, or to short-term and long-term, and then storefront, kind of, it would be, we get the consultant, and then we kind of discuss more details, that would be, to me, what would be valuable. And I think it, it's very inclusive, the way it's expressed, so we can do that.
Okay. So what's on the table that I'm looking for consensus on, then, is a pop-up true temporary art program for fifty thousand dollars over the two years, and that we are not going to restrict out the locations at this point about where that might be?
Excellent.
So everyone, going down the lines, Commissioner Oshigan, thumbs up, thumbs up.
Which is basically what, why the change in the title, anyway, right?
Right, exactly. Great. So moving on, then, well, we actually ended up talking about this a little bit in the beginning, the Public Art Master Plan and funding. Commissioner Oshigan, yes?
Yeah, sorry. The cultural events part on that budget, is that, what is that then exactly? That part of the pop-up art?
Yeah, I mean, it's just saying arts and culture.
Okay.
Yeah.
We might want to change, we'll maybe revisit the, the title, perhaps, when, for an extra vision.
You never know, if something culture comes up, an African Nigerian drum set comes up for a couple nights, for example, in the middle of the district.
Right, no, I'm sorry. I was actually thinking the events component of that, as opposed to the arts and culture, eliminating cultural, but- opposed to the arts and cultural, eliminating cultural, but storytelling on the street or?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are we okay with it? Are we okay with the pop-up arts and cultural events?
Yes.
I'm okay with it.
Yes.
All right, I take it back. So, so the public art master plan and funding strategy, again, we talked about this at the top of the meeting quite a bit. It seemed like everybody, the consensus was that this is clearly something that's important and we're going to have to do it in tandem with, with the, right, we'll be hiring, we'd have to hire a consultant to implement it and it would be in tandem with the, with the two-year work plan as we work through the programs. But it'll help give us more clarity about, about the form of our programs in the future and specifically the acquisitions and, and whatnot. Are there more, are there other questions or thoughts about the budget that you'd like to put at the table about that now?
If I may start.
Commissioner Sherekin?
Budgeting is not a question mark for me. The question is the timetable. We need to have a timetable that what we would like to see when, I don't want to drag this thing for eight months or a year. Let's have this plan, master plan approved, or at least suggested and written and take it to the city council by late July. For example, I'm just giving a date. So we have a targeted date instead of having just discussion after discussion. We, we need to narrow down our minds and talk about the visions and then that's how we would like to go forward.
Before we can move forward with hiring a consultant, however, that we have to have city council approval on the entire work plan. So that'll probably happen in July.
It was July?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so, well, depending on how our, yeah, so we'll definitely come up with a timeframe.
Great. So we're all in consensus on that one. I'm going to move, unless I see otherwise, I'm going to move on to the next program, which is the signature art event, which we also started talking about very briefly. So what's on the table right now is, as I understand it, is to, to add an additional $50,000 to the current signature event that was approved for Glendale Arts to implement. But since they were not able to implement that in our, this current year work plan, that we're going to roll that over and add another $50,000 to that for?
Actually, we, it's another $40,000. We budgeted $60,000 in the prior year.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
And that's with the understanding that Glendale Arts has committed to increasing the funding for the project with either grant, grant funds, which they will seek, or in-kind.
So it's essentially matching, or matching or adding additional, that $400,000 to whatever program they had in place. The other thing that came up earlier in the discussion, of course, was, you know, that's, we've been waiting and waiting and waiting. I don't, you know, we don't know the full background on, on why it's been stalled to this point. But it's certainly worthwhile, the discussion, I think, on the table was the concept of doing, bringing back the open studio tours or something else in 2015. So we should have a discussion about kind of both pieces. One, do we want to allocate a $400,000 to the previously approved Glendale Arts concept? And in addition, do we?
$40,000?
Well, it's a, well, the full budget would be $100,000. It's just the way it's, the way the money rolls over. I was, I was corrected about the, how much was being rolled over. But in effect, we didn't expend any money in the current plan, but in the new plan, it would be $100,000 total. So whether we want to do that, and then the other question is, do we want to add money or not use all that money for them, but take, you know, you still give them the original amount we said we would and take the other 50 and use it towards something else? Any of that's on the table? Ms. Cleary?
The other thing I can do is I can go back to Glendale Arts and see if they would like to consider downscaling the program and doing it earlier, if that's what you chose.
If I could ask a question?
Actually, have Commissioner Jovanasian?
Number one, from what I understand, this was postponed because it was not approved by the council. Was I right?
No, it wasn't brought before the council for a variety of reasons.
Okay. So if they would downsize it, how could it be a signature event? I mean, we were kind of thinking of a full-fledged something and not only as an anniversary for the Glendale Arts or Alex Theater, but also the, the event of the city to kind of celebrate Alex Theater. Maybe that sounds much better. I want to make sure that it is not an Alex Theater event. It is cities kind of event, a signature event that we have. But downsizing, I don't know how that would work. In my mind, it should be something that we were thinking originally, that people from all over are going to come for that special event. And hopefully, in my mind, of course, even though we approved prior to this, and I still like what they do, but it should be something that every year happens, something that people look forward to see on a certain day, uncertain month of the year. Every year in Glendale, it happens. So they'll come to this city. And for that, that is kind of, again, helping not only the artists and the art in itself, but it helps economy. People come to our restaurant. So people plan their life around people who like to travel, people who are art connoisseurs, people who enjoy this kind of events. That would be part of their plan for long-term. So I don't know if Glendale Arts is going to come up with that. We have not seen yet exactly what they want to do. But if, I think they are capable, and I hope that they would come with something good. And that signature event, to me, is very important, extremely important.
Commissioner Oshagun?
What is the, exactly, have they proposed anything or they're going to do where it's too big or not clear on that?
Yeah, yeah. They, the, kind of the laundry list of things they want to do is street art, live music, artisan crafts, a kid's zone, food trucks, a one-day event that goes from morning to evening.
Is it like you block off Brand and everything happens on Brand?
Yeah. Or Maryland.
Or Maryland.
I, I assume they're thinking close to the Alex Theater to be part of the celebration of their 90th anniversary. And, and they've built in the time for planning and grant writing and all the things that, that go along with seeking additional funding and planning an event like this. Their schedule was such that it just couldn't happen earlier. There's a lot going on with Glendale Arts and the Alex Theater.
Commissioner Lee?
Well, in looking at the numbers, you mentioned $60,000 and $40,000. So now if that, we were supposed to give 50, that's $10,000 difference, right? Now that $10,000 difference, if we can roll that over into open studio tour, right, then everybody works.
That is Commissioner Lee's signature event.
Commissioner Sherekin?
This question is for Mike. When we do a contract, and if we don't get the results within a year, or is there a time deadline on those contracts? I mean, in my understanding, when we talk about it during our meeting and we agreed, in, there was some type of sense that they were going to do something this year in April. And that was a rough number, and I suggested I can participate and help. But if there is a contract and there's a deadline or there's a time in it, how can we work with that issue? Is it, how can we extend it all the way to September 2016?
Right now, we actually don't have an agreement with them. We, what the commission did was, was approve the RFP and recommend to city council that Glendale Arts be the selected entity. But we have not gone to council yet to get the professional service agreement. So right now, we have no agreement.
No contract.
Right.
Chair Dever and Commissioner Sherekin, in our professional service agreement, there are definite timelines in it for their performance and also, you know, the timeline that the final has, final work has to be completed. So we do do that in our professional services agreement.
Yeah. I just want to continue if you don't mind.
Sure.
That brings up another level of discussion, maybe. This is something we're learning from. This is something we need to talk about it when we invite companies or organizations to apply for their, for this kind of programs. It's like, we need to have done this within a certain time period. And therefore, in my opinion, this is something that it's acceptable within a certain frame, but it's not acceptable because it's two-year delay. And we would like to do something like a signature event within our city because we have the budget. Is this something we can talk to them and not downscaling it? Maybe do something, a different type of event, not related to the 90th anniversary, something, I don't know. We still have one full year ahead of us and we can definitely do something.
I mean, in speaking to Glendale Arts, their vision is for a $200,000 event. So I think if they were to do it earlier, we would have to downscale their vision of it. We certainly can invite them back next time, or probably in February, to go over what their plan is. That might be the best way to handle it. So, you know, they can once again talk to us about what their plan and how they're planning to fundraise and what their in-kind expenditures will be and what it would take to do it earlier.
For, I'm going to, from my part, I, I find it frustrating that nothing has transpired. I, my understanding is it's not necessarily the selected proposers entire, it's not like their fault necessarily. I think there was, there was something happening at the city level, why it couldn't come forth. So keeping that in mind, it tempers my irritation with it all. That said, I, I personally find it difficult to, to know what to do without hearing from Glendale Arts, as Ms. Cleary suggests, if they can come back and talk to us about, you know, what the delay is, what the time commitment is. Is there potential of, of downscaling it to make it more, a more efficient program, both for them? I mean, just for, I'm assuming, you know, doing all that kind of fundraising, it's got to be a lot of staff time. I, you know, personally, I mean, just to go off of that note, if there was an opportunity to do a different kind of program, since nothing has happened with this, that is maybe a little more unique and maybe less difficult to, to pull off, I actually would embrace that. And, but there's also the technical aspect, this is sort of just rolling out. So our recommendation, if it's just, is this going to roll out because we don't have a contract in place or anything, it sort of disappears and we're sort of starting over? Do we want to recommend that we just start over something else completely different and smaller scale? Or do we want to kind of keep helping feed this one along? And from my part, I'm feeling a little bit like I kind of wanted to start over, to be frank about it. But I understand that there's other extenuating circumstances to which we are not privy about with that, with that regard. So I, I certainly would personally would want them to, to come and kind of give the case of what's, what's planned, if there's an opportunity to do a scaled-down version, do something more, more sooner. Other, other thoughts on that or?
May I add something?
Please, Commissioner Sherekin?
I'm not even looking for a smaller scaled-down version of whatever that event is. Maybe something different with a signature type of event, you know, not necessarily that, I mean, I would definitely participate and help whatever that 90th anniversary of Alex Theater is, which is very nice. But we can have another type of signature program, not performance, nothing, with a different concept. We have the budget, let's utilize that to a, well, yes, I would agree. But no, what I'm saying is, let's, let's maximize and make another signature event within 2015 fiscal year. And that's what I'm saying.
I, I think, just going back to when we issued the RFPs, if I remember correctly, that we, we were sort of somewhat under budget for the type of scale of thing that we were looking for. So even something that's, you know, out of the box to some extent in terms of a signature event, that's, that's particularly unique. I think that, I don't think we had the funding and otherwise they wouldn't have had to match another $100,000 to it. So just keeping that in, in mind as well. And then there is the time component of having to put something, you know, doing it, or another RFP, selecting, making, you know, going through that process, giving them the time to plan something. So I don't know, in effect, whether something is really going to happen that much sooner either, practically speaking. Commissioner Oshagun?
I would like to echo what you were saying, Terry, in terms of the uniqueness. I think that's really important. I don't know what kind of event they were planning, but it didn't seem like it was very different than all the other community events that happen. You block off the street, you have a band, you have, I think really echo the uniqueness is, is what I would like to say. Have something, ask them to do, come up with an idea that's not what's already been done so many times and see if we can come up with, for Glendale, something different. I think, but the signature event is important, but, but it needs to be unique. It shouldn't just be what was done 50,000 times before, you know?
Commissioner Jovanasian?
One idea would be, you know, I don't know if, could be kind of put within this framework, but let's say there would be a great performance at Casa Dobby, you know, it's one of our old buildings in the city of Glendale. It has an open area for seating. Something that, you know, more classy, more unique, and, and the performers could be well-known performers, maybe from different countries or even whatever. So I don't know what works within the budget, but in a way, to have a carnival, to have a day, kind of as it goes on, you know, one gets very excited when it's being presented. But as Commissioner Oshagun says, I don't see anything special or novel about that as a signature event that would kind of, people specifically would leave everything else from everywhere and come and participate. It would be like the Unity Fest that we had for years, we had here for quite a period of time. So that is there. And then as far as the money and allocating the money on a smaller scale, let's say for the time being, if we want to, to the special project that he likes, we could even ask Glendale Art Association to do a little kind of a open art studio to organize it, because we don't plan it ourselves. We delegate it. So maybe we could do that if that goes within the RFPs and understandings and legalities and paperwork. But if we want something fast, that is something that we were known for and we were doing it very well. That means the artists within the community, they were opening their homes and their studios and people were going from, you know, even beelines were arranged that people could go if they didn't want to drive. And they were stopping by and they would get to know the artists and where they live and all that stuff. It was on a small scale. We did it with 5,000. Maybe if it's more elaborate, we could have it with 10. And we won't do it again. We would ask one of the art organizations to kind of do it for us. So that is fine. But as far as you are with Glendale Arts, I do believe that we have to review it again and the timeline. I know that there are lots of stuff, not having staff. We have had a lot of hurdles to go through. That's why nobody wants to postpone things, but it was postponed due to a lot of different reasons. So we need to review that now that we are at this point, knowing what we have as far as our staffing goes and as far as our possibilities and, and Glendale Arts. But if we can put aside the small amount and to make Commissioner Lee would be a great idea. It was our little signature event. If we continue with that. It's not a major one, but it helps our artists because they get to be known and we get to know them and community gets to know them.
Commissioner Lee?
And, and to elaborate on the open studio tour, I would imagine two days, you know, to elaborate, to be able to see all the artists. Like I said, again, for, for me, throughout the entire time, I think I was only able to go to 20, 23 or 28 artists' studios. There was over 120 or 130 that was on our list, you know, to, to, and like I said again, it's, it's a middle fund, funding. It's a win-win for everyone involved. And for me, if I was an artist, I, I would jump on this opportunity because all the other events are localized, they're, you know, specific. This one is where you have an opportunity to open up yourself to the entire public and to be able to utilize it. And like I said again, coordination-wise, yes, it, it takes a little time. But we, we still have, I think we still have somewhat of a database. We would just have to, you know, have the database, or Glendale Arts has a database, you know, to utilize it, to move it on. And I, I would really prefer something, at least at the smaller scale for now, at least we're having something. And, and that was what I was really, you know, I sit on the Unity Festival Committee and along with that same lines, we dropped everything to look forward to this one, the signature event. And I, I don't see it coming out anytime soon. You know, even in 2016, we're talking, you know, that's a good time away for us to do something smaller scale. And Unity Festival, you know, was quite a bit more budget. But like I said, this would be a low budget, something that we can do. And I don't see that many other cities doing that exact function. They have open studios, but not something that's set up the way we had it set up, that, you know, everybody's open in, in Glendale. Those are all, you know, artist areas that are open, you know, loft areas. That's what happens all the others, cities. happens all the others, cities. But I don't see something like this. They have art walks, they have other things, but I see that as a signature event itself that we started. And like I said, to elaborate on that, you know, I would really prefer.
Commissioner De Hovenasian?
Just to elaborate on that, you know, it was a wonderful feeling. I don't know if this talk is getting to some purpose or we are going to really achieve it, but truly, getting to know the artists within all over, it was mapped. Artists in our city were mapped, their homes and their locations and different, even the garage that was turned into an art exhibit. So when I was driving in the city of Glendale after those open tour studios, I felt, I'm not joking, I felt I'm among friends because, oh, this is this artist's home and that's so-and-so lives in that house. And in my mind, I could visualize them doing the work that they were doing, kind of, it made the city like home for me as far as knowing where all the artists are. Now, we didn't touch base with all, but it was a large number and kind of specifically because it was so kind of sincere. It was within their kitchens, it was within their garages, it was in their backyards or in galleries and et cetera. I saw so many galleries at that, I'd never had the opportunity to personally go and visit, and that was a chance to do. So if we can do that, if, not us, but delegated to an organization, to Glendale Arts or Glendale Art Association, either one, they can do that for us for a small amount of money to kind of appease us as far as having some signature event till we get on a larger scale to see what Glendale Arts wants to do for us and have a meeting with them, if we could do that.
Commissioner Sherkian?
I know it's a long meeting today, but the signature event, in my mind, it just doesn't limit to a art studio. In my mind, there are probably at least five different suggestions that I can talk about it, which will be a signature event in Glendale. From the technology to different art performances, to theatrical performances, to different dance companies, to visit our city convention and have an open public dance performances, one group after another, a signature event that is unique in its content and its beauty and the art. So I don't want to limit myself to a certain one aspect, that's why I would like to see a, maybe organization, a company, to come forward with ideas, then give us those ideas within maybe a few months, and then we'll go with the second signature event. I would like definitely to see something that is more interaction with people, something performance and something is unique. So therefore, those are, in my mind at least, it's more a signature event for Glendale in comparing to other cities. We have Burbank, which is full of studios, we have Pasadena, which they have the art center, we have City of Los Angeles, different museums, but City of Glendale, which is in between all those three major kind of art programming events, we don't have, that's why we, maybe we will talk about eventually that grand plan, but we are slow-moving, but surely we're gonna head towards that artistic city, jewel city, jewel city. We will, we will do that eventually, yes. That's an opinion.
I mean, it could be done in different ways, but again, it needs a lot of staffing. It could be as a bid for different art organizations to come and propose what they can do within a certain amount of money, and then for us to kind of make a suggestion and take it to the council and with the approval of the council to go ahead. Major programs need major money, I'm sure. I don't know if 100,000, I'm not good with money, I don't know if 100,000 would be able to fulfill that requirement of that capacity if we wanted. It depends how big we think things should be. Yes, you're right, we could have different forms of presentations. And to me, either a consultant should decide, or it could be a bid that staff put and then different organizations come and say what they are offering, that is another way of kind of doing that. But at this point, I think we need to wait and see with Glendale Arts to come and explain where they are and for us to review and see why we had the delays and then proceed from there.
Yeah, I'm gonna pipe up on at this point. So I do, I do think that we certainly, before we just sort of dismiss and ask the city to, you know, "Stop, don't sign contracts," you know, that we definitely need to invite Glendale Arts to, to the dais to kind of give us an update on where things are, what their plans are, what the, what the possibilities are for, to make it easier, if it's downscaling, if it's changing, if there's room to discuss that at this point. I think we need to have that conversation. I think the other piece of what I'm hearing, the sort of agreement that, you know, maybe that, you know, could be a great event, could be a fun event, bring people in, is probably not really if we all said what we really, really wanted moving forward after that was successfully implemented, where I'm hearing maybe we want something else. There's a lot of different examples from, from film festivals to, you know, I looked up something the other day in Scotland where it has to do with, you know, digital art that's happening across the city. It's, and a lot of these signature art programs also start out small, so it's, you're seeding something that maybe it's not the hugest scale thing that we're starting, maybe it's not Glow that Santa Monica did a lot of fundraising for and hired a consultant to do, but maybe it's something smaller that eventually, I think our initial idea was that we would seed something and then eventually that organization would take it over and continue that as an annual event. And, and we didn't fund, in my opinion, we didn't fund that program sufficiently to bring in the kinds of proposals that maybe would have garnered that kind of activity to move forward. I mean, quite honestly, I think we just, we underfunded that. So, so what I, I would propose and see if there's consensus is, one is having Glendale Arts come and just kind of, you know, let us know where things are so we have more information and we're not speculating on things. And then also then to have a follow-up conversation about if we want to, you know, continue with that and plan for something once that's done, or if we want to suggest, recommend scrapping the whole thing and starting fresh on a new type of signature event of some sort, whatever that might be. And I think as a, as a commission, we should probably come together and put some very specific framework around what we think that should be. So when an RFP goes out, it's funded to the amounts that we know it needs to be funded to, to garner the kind of response that we require and then put in that RFP what we're hoping for so we can get these unique and interesting responses. I'm also hearing then that the, that the, that the open studio tours, I know there's been a desire to resurrect that for a number of years. I think that that, you know, maybe that's something else we can talk about, it may not be the signature art event, maybe that is another bucket program, what's a smaller-scale community program that is part of our, our plan that we also, I think, I frankly, I think 10,000 is probably not enough to do it appropriately. If you're gonna make sure that the maps are there and it's coordinated and it's webbed and there's media about it and there's some sort of tram or bus services, we're so disparate in terms of locations here, we don't have an arts and cultural district where, like in Eagle Rock, I think they do something very similar on an almost monthly basis, that sort of, you know, monthly studio tour type of thing, and they put out maps, but you still have to drive to different locations. So if we wanted to do something like that, I think we'd probably need to fund it more and consider that as, as a separate program. That's a lot, I'd have said. But there's sort of three components. It's revisiting the open studio tour as a separate program, it's inviting the Glendale Arts back, and it's looking at what we want to do with that in terms of the signature art. Is, are there other thoughts about that?
Let's, like it's.
Commissioner Oshagun?
Quick comments. Whatever signature event, we need to give it a direction. It seems like they were just, "Do something." I think definitely very, very important to give them a direction to do something. I, I have not been to the open studios in Glendale, but I've been to many other ones, and I think it's a great way to engage on the micro level, like everybody was saying. I think it's a really program, and it should probably have its own line item thing that should be done in parallel with a signature event that we hopefully, as a commission, we can come up with, give it the direction that we want. This is the kind of identity we want to develop for Glendale over the long term. Short and quick.
So if we add a program to this, just, no, I just wanted to, to follow up on what you're saying, would it be an idea to, for us to survey all of you between now and the February meeting and see, I'd like to gather your ideas on what is the identity of a signature event is. I mean, whether it's digital art or, you know, a chalk walk or a open studio tour. I mean, we talked about going out into the community, but I'd really like to hear your opinions, and maybe we can do that informally before the next meeting and we can present those ideas.
I can email.
Yeah, so Yvonne, Yvonne will.
Yeah.
So for, since we're told it's after four, I think I'd like to just sort of table this then until we get this additional information, and so it'll be pending, hopefully, the February meeting and in between, the information that you'll gather from us. So our next program then is Temporary Public Art in Public Places, and this is the Long-Term Temporary Art.
Long-Term Temporary.
Semi-permanent, was what I keep going back to.
Long-Term Temporary, Semi-permanent, yeah.
I have a question. Are we gonna stay till what time?
That's a technical question. I know it was scheduled until four, I don't know how long we have, it's not like our regular meeting, I don't know if we're gonna get.
I think we have until 4:30.
Till 4:30. All right, thank you.
Sure.
So, so the Temporary Public Art in Public Places, I invite comment about that program, budget, what it means, whether we want to keep this as, as presented in this draft plan.
I think you could just ask, what falls under that program, just to see where we start from.
I guess I compare it to, I live in Pasadena, I shouldn't admit that, working in Glendale, but I live in Pasadena and they have a very active semi-permanent art program where these installations pop up all over the city and they stay up for 18, well, actually, I think they're stay up for 18 months. So they're mostly fairly large sculptural elements. Most, most of them are very colorful, very eye-catching in places where there's a lot of either traffic or pedestrian traffic. It's really, really effective, it really catches your eye. And so this, unlike the work that AFTA is working on, would allow the artwork to stay in place for a significant amount of time. And one of the things that prompted this idea really was that AFTA is working on one installation at Central Park that unfortunately is only gonna be there a couple months, but it should be up there for 18 to 24 months because it's, the artist has put a lot of effort into it and it really merits more time. So I think that's kind of the definition of it. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Sherkian?
In fact, the, both, two pictures that there are on page 12, I've seen both of them, and they're, both of them are, the one in Pasadena and Palm Desert, and those are good examples, but both of them, they can be for a longer period of time over there, they can be permanent artworks too. In my mind at least, it's very simple to have this kind of exhibitions on Glen Oaks Boulevard, the center part of the Glen Oaks where you have probably four.
Center median.
Yes, exactly. That's one area, and then could be another area right on brands in the center divider areas. So there are a lot of places and we can invest at least maybe $3,000 to $5,000 per artwork, and that will be enough to put it up there. The $50,000 is a good budget, that's what I'm saying. And it all depends what we want and then how we want to see it, but $50,000 is a good budget to start.
And I want to question staff on that because you've done research and how, why the numbers were arrived at, because I think, one of it's the consultant overseeing the program, two, it's the stipends for the artists, the materials, the insurance, all of the management component, probably the city staff, there's time involved in that if it's public space and being able to ensure that it's secured properly and all of that. So would $50,000 as a budget severely limit this to maybe two temporary art, for instance, as opposed to maybe six? I don't know, I don't know what's in this number.
Yeah, I mean, I think based on what we've learned, we were thinking eight.
Eight pieces for $50,000?
Eight pieces for 100.
Well, and I'm going on what our neighboring city does, and, and that seemed reasonable. I mean, at the time of issuing an RFP, we certainly can determine that in terms of the caliber of art, the materials used, et cetera, et cetera. So, I mean, we can determine at a later date how many art pieces we would like. But really, I think, my opinion, to make a statement in the city, you need at least six scattered throughout, or, I'm sorry, eight scattered about.
Eight, 6,000 each.
Each, yeah.
So there's zero for this year, next year, 100,000 for 1617 on this budget, is that right?
Yeah.
Right, I think.
What is that, what does that mean?
Okay, I think it was, it was explained at the beginning, I think it's because the contract we have under currently, under AFTA Productions, AFTA Productions, is rolling over through 2016 in terms of how long those will be up. And so the implementation of this will probably start in 2016, but the artwork, if it's up for 18 months or so, is probably gonna take us into, you know, to, outside of this budget to 2018 or so that those artworks would be up. I think that's what I heard earlier.
Yes.
I like short answers.
Well, I think, I don't know, 6,000 for one installation may be good for one type of installation, but may not be nearly enough for another type. And it really depends what kind of installations we want. Do we want more traditional sculptures like they may have, for instance, in West Hollywood, they have it, they have, those are not 6,000 anyway to begin with, because those are really good art, artists who do that. Or if we want to do something more innovative, you know, different, new.
So.
I think it depends a lot on what kind of artwork we want to show in these temporary places.
And so to go back to that, what we're looking at at this point is that, is making sure we have enough money in the budget. If we don't use it all, great, that's fine, we'll roll it over, but we want to make sure there's enough in the budget that as we refine what we want, that we don't have to go back and recommend to council a change in the, in the, in the budget to make that happen or we have to reduce down to, you know, two, two pieces. So that's what we're doing here.
And that's the reason for the 100,000, is that so we can have that latitude and then at a later date define exactly what we want.
And I'll say at this point, as we're going through this, we haven't made much changes to the budget. So right now, it's not like we're blowing ourselves out of the water where we have to reduce somewhere at this point from, at least based on this conversation, we've stuck pretty close to the current proposed budgets.
The other thing we should keep in mind is that this is a two-year budget, so at the end of the first year, we're gonna review, we will review what we've come up with for the following year for the 1617 budget.
Well, this isn't, but this is placed under 201617 as it is, the 100K total.
Right.
So you say, oh, we would review in like two.
Right.
Latter part of 2016 or, okay.
I would like to add, if you'll, regarding the, although we mentioned this Temporary Public Art in Public Places, but there are certain location, it's like real estate location, that we would like to emphasize and concentrate on those locations. We've talked about maybe a year and a half ago when there are three entrances to Glendale, one from.
The gateways.
Gateways, one from east, north and south. We probably invest, I mean, it might be a better idea to look at it another point of view. The temporary artworks will enhance the entrance to the city while for 24 months, we can rotate that. So it's a good approach, but we need to emphasize where the location is.
So, I must, in the interest of time, I'm just gonna note that we have that because I think I wanted to focus on right now is keeping the program, we can talk about the details when we talk about the program, just because we've got 15 minutes and I'd really love to get through this.
But that is a detail that we will work out in the Public Art Master Plan.
Exactly. Okay, okay. I just wanted to.
No, it's perfect, and I actually got your initial note too about Glen Oaks and brand and I have gateways. Are there, so.
I think we should increase this budget. Six or eight, we want six or eight really interesting pieces. We don't want to repeat what Pasadena does, right? We want to do something Glendale will do. I think we should increase the budget so that we can do something.
So in your, in your experience, what would that, what are you thinking?
I'm not sure, I mean, you could, I think you could increase it 25,000 maybe, so that you could have $10,000 for every piece, 12,000 for 10 pieces over two years.
Commissioner Lee?
Well, if we go on those same lines, you said three points of entrance, we start out with three big pieces, let's say $10,000 a piece, that's only gonna be 30,000 as, as a start, and then the following year, we have that embellished, put a few more items within the city. Does that sound a little better? Because like I said, you want, you want those pieces to be, you know, right on brand, you know, Glendale Avenue, Glendale Boulevard, for example, Glen Oaks on the. know, Glendale Avenue, Glendale Boulevard, for example, Glen Oaks on the west and Glen Oaks on the east or, you know, somewhere by the freeway on the east where it's sea, you know, where it's a main thoroughfare.
So are you suggesting that we don't look at eight, that we look at three or four instead and retain it at the 100,000? Is that what I'm hearing?
Because then-
I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, and then like I said again, then we'll elaborate as we go. And that's what I actually had envisioned last year when we started this.
So again, in the interest of time, so what I'm hearing is if, I'm hearing two things. One, let's increase the budget and keep it at eight for sure and know that we can have a better chance of accomplishing that in a way we would want to. Or do we want to keep the hundred, at 100,000 and keep us from having to cut someplace else because, or rationalize increasing this 10-year annualization of the funding that we have available to us? Say that we're going to do, we're going to target more like four or five and keep it at the 100 and feel good about that for our first implementation of that program.
And if I could offer a third option-
Absolutely.
And I don't mean to belabor this, but I think the definition of this would come under the master plan. So we could keep it at 100,000 and then once we have the master plan, if we choose, we can up it or decrease it, either way. But that'll give us some definition, three, five, eight locations, what quality or the type that we want, et cetera. So that would be my suggestion.
Yes, okay. So Commissioner Lee?
My first question would be, how are they coming along with it? Were they planning to show us something?
This is a different program. So this isn't the, are you thinking this is the AFTA?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not.
It's not, okay.
Yeah.
That's what I'm learning when that's coming. When is that coming too? Because I'm, you know, we're sitting month to month to month and we're not hearing any-
I think it was November, it was October or November in your packet was a list of all their proposals. Now, one of the roadblocks that we've come across that we didn't anticipate was how much time it took to, not define, but, but work out the logistics of all the locations. And that, once again, I'm going to belabor it again, is one of the reasons that we really need to do the public art master plan so that we can, we can identify all the locations, get approval for, you know, agreement to do the things in those spaces and then just move forward with the programs. Yeah, but there was, I think it was October or November, there was a pretty comprehensive review of the eight projects that they are proposing and that are in the process. So once we're further along, she will come back, Joy Fuhr will come back and go through them with you.
So with that additional information, are we in consensus then for keeping it as is? And we'll get into the weeds on it later a little bit more.
And we'll talk about master plan.
Okay. Great. So then moving on, we have the discretionary, which would, it's just discretionary funding of a total 40,000, 20,000 in each of the two years, which would include capital outlay expenditures to enhance city-owned performance venues specifically. There had been conversation about, for instance, performances at Brand and that we'd need some funding for something like that. So it's a discretionary pool of funds that could be used for discretionary purposes, but that was one of the ideas behind the reason that this is in the budget. Are there thoughts about having the discretionary fund? Is anybody, everybody okay with what's been proposed in terms of the budget? Commissioner De Hovenestian?
Question, would it come to the commission and it would be discussed which are the venues and would we say into what we think as representatives of community that we would like done or?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Other thoughts on that particular discretionary fund program? Okay, so we'll keep that as is. So the next item then was the discretionary acquisition of permanent art. And this is the, to be determined because we'll need the master art plan, so there's no funding allocated to that specifically. And so I'm assuming that we would just, we just want to have a placeholder for that that's approved by council that we can fill in based on an approved public art master plan at a later date. Is that-
Yeah, I think at this point, we want your consensus that this is something that we should consider as part of the public art master plan, the acquisition of art.
We want permanent art in our city.
We definitely want that, yes.
Big time, big time.
So I'm seeing consensus that that is a reasonable thing to have. In terms of things that we added to the plan that didn't come through here earlier in the conversation, I think I was, we already talked about the open studio tours, which was added by Commissioner Lee. I had brought back a public comment, which was about the Rose Bowl float that the city in the past, I guess, has funded and private funding to do this one-time annual event. Commissioner De Hovenestian shared some of her thoughts about whether that was really appropriate under our cultural plan that we have in place and in light of the other programs, whether we would want to recommend to city council that there be some sort of program under which this might sit or this problem, it's just to give, to respect the comments that were brought forth by the community. I wanted to put that on the table for discussion. Ms. Cleary?
Just let me add that a Rose Parade float averages, or in the past years, has averaged between 100 and 125,000 dollars.
Thank you. Other thoughts?
Question?
Commissioner Shurekian?
What was the main reason that we did not participate with a float this year? And, I mean, is it a community event or just the city pays for it?
It's been a combination of the city paying for it and donors. And so it really was not being able to find enough donors and the limited city resources.
Did it fall under this commission's budget then?
No.
No, just the city?
City. Yeah, it was a city council issue.
Okay, so the proposal is to use our budget for that. Well, because the city is not going to pay for it anymore, is that right then?
Correct. Well, I mean, it goes from year to year, but this past year, they did not approve that.
I would echo Arlet's sentiment that this is a lot of, a lot of money that could be used to help Glendale and to really find this identity of Glendale in Glendale rather than sending it next door really in this thing that's really lasts one day, right? Or a few days and people go see it. Keep to the budget, keep our resources local, help our own artists and help our own identity as an art city is much better.
Commissioner De Hovenestian?
But I add, it could be our artists, but you know, my vision, even though I love Rose Parade and I love the floats and it's great for Glendale to have a float there, but since our goal and mission was to help artists, to promote art and artists within city of Glendale and also to promote and help the economy, or art would be a venue for helping the economy, in that direction, I don't see how we could discuss about it. Because this is group of volunteers come and they put all the flowers together and it's not kind of promoting any artist. Now, if it's going to be a signature work of a certain artist in Glendale and kind of one person's job, I don't know, that would be a different kind of a way of dealing with it. Otherwise, it's a great idea, but it doesn't go with whatever the goal and direction we got from the council for our commission. That's the only issue.
Commissioner Lee?
Well, my thoughts are twofold. One, do keep in mind that, I don't know what the statistics were this year, but in past years, they said that over a billion people view the parade. So the publicity that brings to Glendale is in tenfold. The reason why the cost is a lot lower, average floats range anywhere from 200 to a half million dollars to put together. And that's because we have volunteers and normally they have volunteers that help put the flowers and that is the savings that you get from all the volunteer hours that are put in to put in the flowers. Because if you had to just pay and put the floats together, they average, you know, like I said, up to a half a million dollars just to put a float together. Now, in past years, the city does some funding, there's, there's a lot of fundraising done. I have a good feeling that that can be done again, you know, and put together. I would say maybe put, we put a little discretionary fund available for, you know, 10, 20,000 or something small that we can contribute to it if needed for that purpose. And like I said again, it, the reality of it is, even though it's, you know, a couple-hour event, we actually display the float in front of the Alex Theater for at least a week. You know, it represents the city. For example, you know, was it two years ago, the bear? You know, it gives people to see, hey, what's happening in Glendale, what's there? And that's normally what it's all about and to bring people here. And I do feel that it is part of our mission in that essence, but because it's always been funded outside of our commission, you know, I don't see us being the spear holder, spearhead of that event.
And I'm going to give my two cents on it just because I did think about this after our, the community member came and, because I thought, well, yeah, it is, it's got to be designed by an artist of some sort. It's, you know, you can, there's art components to it. But given, going back through, I went back through our work plan, our arts and cultural work plan and then looked at our goals and our strategies and nowhere under that five-year plan did I find a place for that, really. It does, I agree that it draws attention to Glendale. You can use artists within the community, but a lot of that involves how it's put together. And because I too don't see, we couldn't spearhead it, you know, maybe the city would want to use some of these funds, 10, 20,000, whatever towards it, but since it's not, we couldn't describe the theme, we couldn't say, you know, this is about arts in Glendale. We want the float to be celebrating the arts in Glendale. Then like, okay, now I'm, you know, now we're kind of talking, but we would have such a small voice in that it's a community event that I have a hard time rationalizing it and I certainly don't see it as a primary program of the commission. And since we're here to recommend to council, I personally have a hard time recommending to council to use the urban art fund for that program. It's always their discretion to come back and say, "This is important to the city and we think we should tap the arts fund for it." And they can absolutely do that. But I think from my role here on the commission, I have a hard time moving that forward, although I do see some, see the value in it and see that the work correlates. I just don't think we'd have enough control over what it is. So that's my opinion.
You said exactly what, you know, in the best possible way. You know, she always does that for me and, you know, it's exactly how it goes. It's a great idea. It is for our pride, I understand, but as far as the funding and et cetera, it is kind of.
So with that, in our last three minutes, I'm hearing consensus that at this point we perhaps do not, and there were some varying, there's on the table of putting a couple thousand in there in a discretionary fund in case the city wants to tap into it. Is there other opinions in that regard or would we rather just perhaps not have this part of this two-year?
I would suggest just leave the city council, take a decision. It's there.
Commissioner Oshinka?
We just, you know.
Sorry, I was just going down the line. I'm watching the clock tick.
Yeah, no, I don't think we should.
Okay, thank you.
And I agree, if the city council decides and suggests we should put aside a certain amount, that will follow as directed.
And Commissioner Lee, are you all right with that? Great. So thank you all. I think we've, we've made it through all of the programs we've and-
One minute to spare.
One minute to spare we've got. As long as the clock is on time, we'll know if it go off the air. So, yeah.
I just want to add something other than this.
Yeah, less than one minute.
During last meeting, Ari Kevorkian came by and he invited us to Tevanic movie, which I went on Friday evening. My wife and I were there and it's a beautiful movie and I enjoyed the night and I was hoping at least see maybe you there.
I was sick. I was very sick. I was in bed and I-
But yes, and I had a nice seat.
Email the group. I know, and I would like some information.
Okay, okay. I totally appreciate it. We did not have comments on the agenda, so we are out of order. And with that, I want to close this item and we are adjourned.
Okay.